There we go. Good morning, everybody. Good to see you. Welcome to our early Monday morning meeting. We'll go ahead and call today's meeting to order. It's Monday, November 3rd, 2025. This is our official morning meeting for the Fire County Board of County Commissioners. If everybody could stand for the pledge of the flag, please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, thank you. At this time, we'll take a brief moment of silence. This is for individual prayer, reflection, or meditation. This morning, want to make special recognition, it's been since we were here last, Hurricane Melissa ravaged Jamaica, so just keep the people of Jamaica in your thoughts and prayers. And also sad news for our own Commissioner, Ms. Carney, whose mother passed away, so keep Commissioner Carney's family in your prayers this week. And additionally, each week, we honor and remember our first responders and the men and women in our military who keep us safe and protect our freedoms at home and abroad. All righty, thank you, everybody. There's no additions, deletions, or modifications to the agenda. We have a few announcements on November 5th at 1:00 p.m. Please join us, that's a Wednesday, please join us for the Fairground and Expo Hall groundbreaking ceremony. We're breaking ground on the new facility that'll help keep Flagler safe, strong, and connected. It's our weather hurricane shelter that is not tied to the school district, so it'll be the one shelter that we have where we don't have to, if we do activate it, we don't have to shut down the entire school district. Flagler County Fire Administration Station 50 groundbreaking will be on Thursday, November 13th at 10:00 a.m., and that's to help celebrate the start of construction for that new facility. County offices will be closed November 10th and 11th for Veterans Day. And our upcoming commission meetings and workshops, we have a workshop Monday, November 17th at 1:00 p.m., and our next regular meeting is Monday, November 17th at 5:00 p.m. Okay, with that, we're going to move on to, today, we don't have any recognitions or proclamations, but we do have a presentation, and that is for the Flagler County Agricultural and Natural Resources, presented by George Leibel, is that correct?
Leibel.
Leibel, thank you. And our extension agent, one with UF and IFIS Extension, so good morning.
Good morning.
I like that gator on your shirt.
Yes, sir. Not too good this weekend, but...
Hey, close.
We're basketball school this year. So...
Keep going.
Well, good morning. Thank you all for having me here. My name's George Leibel. I'm the Ag and Natural Resource Agent for Flagler County. Been in the position about six months and really enjoying it, so thankful to be here. I'm going to tell you a little bit about myself and where I come from and what I do. So, born and raised in Palatka, Florida, spent a lot of time on the St. John's River growing up. Really fell in love with the natural world and the river especially, so that inspired me and pushed me into the natural sciences, specifically horticulture science. So, getting into the University of Florida, I found a really sweet gig at the Plant Diagnostic Center, where I learned a lot about plant pathology and working with growers. So, from then on, I moved to Hastings, the Cowpen Branch Research Facility, and really learned that Hastings is the center for the tri-county ag area. And you can't talk about Hastings without talking about Thomas Hastings. So, he's the cousin of Henry Flagler. Henry Flagler came down and built his hotels in the early 1800s, and he wanted seasonal fresh produce for his guests, so he called up his cousin, Thomas, and he moved down at the turn of the century, started a small garden of about 1,500 acres, which has turned into current-day Hastings. And like I said, Hastings is the hub for the tri-county area, that being St. John's, Flagler, and Putnam, and it's a big partnership between IFIS Extension, of course, our stakeholders, our growers, ranchers, producers, the St. John's Water Management District, Florida Department of Environmental Protection, and DAX, Department of Ag and Consumer Services. So, we've been at it for a little over 100 years. It really started as the Potato Investigations Lab when growers back in the day realized they needed a little extra help behind the scenes of their operations, looking at genetics, fertility, and different varieties, things that they could do to improve their operations and remain sustainable. So, like I said, one of our biggest partners is the Water Management District. They monitor the water quality, ensuring the ag is sustainable, that we've got a high quality and quantity in the river, our lakes, everything like that. So, this is one of my favorite things that we do today to ensure sustainability. This is called a soil grid sampler, and the Putnam County Soil Board just approved funding for one of these. It will be available to anyone in the tri-county area, which is really cool. So, this buggy goes out and it takes soil samples every one or two, or however often you decide it to take, in a 200 grid to a 2,000 grid or beyond plot. And so that's all saved in this iPad with GPS coordinates. Soil samples are sent off to the lab. Lab results come back, IFIS Extension will write you up a report with a big map like this, got binders, all kinds of stuff, that'll tell you how much phosphorus, or sulfur, or lime is needed in that part of the field, so we're not just spreading it willy-nilly, leading to leachate and nutrient loading, and eventually algae blooms, degrading the water quality. So, you take your flash drive with all this data, plug it right into a John Deere tractor, it's got a variable rate spreader behind it, that's what this big machine is, and it knows how much or less to spread throughout the field. So you're not just overloading the natural resources with nutrients, degrading the water quality. So, a little bit more about Extension. We do tons of site visits. We've got a lot of office visits, outreach and education. We provide research-based education and assistance to growers, producers, ranchers, and everyday home folks. So, we offer a ton of diagnostic services, including soil sampling, tissue sampling, disease diagnostics mitigation, and we'll help you get pest management put in place. Locally, here in Flagler County, last year, we worked with the Clegg Farm. They're a big cow-calf producer, sod producer, and hay producer. So, we simply wanted to improve their pasture health, and it came down to just spreading compost to see what that would do. And it ended up spreading their fertility longevity, where they required less fertilizer to be put out, leading to less leachate. Their fields bounced back quicker after a sod harvest, led to less erosion, and of course, less fertilizing. So, this year, we're working with Bratcher Farm. They've long been a cabbage producer in the county. We're looking to diversify their farm with citrus this year, so we've got 200 citrus trees across 10 different varieties. Going to see which ones do the best. We're also working with state specialists to come up with any other data we can come up with. What oranges are sweeter? Which ones are better for juice? Which ones are better for table stock varieties? So, I hope that was under five minutes. Thank you for having me. Come see me anytime. We're just down the road.
Well, thank you. That's a great report. I know, having done leadership with the Regional Council, we did a whole day out in St. John's and just on the outskirts of Hastings, did a lot of look at the potato harvesting. It was a great experience.
It's pretty cool.
To get out onto that, it was very cool.
Yeah.
Anybody have any questions?
I have a question.
Go ahead.
You're going to be planting oranges.
Yes.
Okay, that's great. Is that after the new greening process they just came up with? Is that, are they bringing the, you know, they were killing...
Yeah, so greening has been devastating in the last 20 years to the state. It's all over our license plates. You know, we're known as the citrus state, and not only the development, but the greening has really taken a toll on the industry. But all of these varieties are greening tolerant varieties. So, they're not proof. We're going to see what we can do, but they should have some stronger resilience to the disease.
So, that's wonderful.
Making a lot of headway.
I'm excited about that.
Me too.
As Floridians, we know.
Yeah.
Sunshine state.
That's right.
Yep, thank you.
And I'm glad you touched on the home services. I don't think we get, right, that message out enough to our residents about the services that the Extension Office provides.
We do a lot of things. We wear a lot of hats, so...
Especially with residents that have, we've talked about water conservation, but also the soil sampling being just a basic if people want to know, are doing a home garden and want to know, you know, what their, like you said, what the soil needs.
Yeah, take the guesswork out.
Right.
That's right.
So, long range, long-term, that technology is really neat, to be able to just designate certain areas of the soil and certain nutrients as needed, as opposed to just going, we're studying, you're studying at the same time?
Yes, there's tons of research being conducted constantly.
Yeah.
That part gets mundane to me, but I nerd out on all the new technology. It's a lot of, lot of fun and really cool to see that we don't just go spread 350 pounds of phosphorus out in the field. Well, half the field didn't need that much, you know, so we really dial it in. That's what we call precision ag.
So you're a young man, so you've seen technology change, probably not as much as...
Not as much as y'all have, but a good bit.
It grows so exponentially.
I'm calling you experienced.
Thank you for that big word.
I was talking to y'all.
But it's growing exponentially, so it's so nice to see UF and IFIS taking a charge of this.
Taking a lead.
Thank you. Especially our 4-H leader, Hope. She does a great job with the youth.
She does.
Our archery guy, Mike, I love how he puts it. He says, "The youth's got really strong thumbs, but we got to get them doing other things."
That's right.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Thanks for a great job.
Very much.
Thank you all.
Thank you for your support team coming too as well. Thank you. All right, so we'll move on to community outreach. It's a 30-minute time period allocated for public comment on any consent agenda item or topic that's not on the agenda. Speaker's allowed up to three minutes, so come up to the podium and state your name and direct your comments to the commissioners.
Morning, Mr. Chairman and Commissioners. My name's John Tanner. I'm attorney for Flagler Beach and Beulah Creek, Inc., a nonprofit. Very active in this community, as you, most of you, I think, know. I'm only going to, since I have three minutes, address something that the members are really concerned about and are putting in front of me and saying, "When are we going to start talking about it?" And that is the proposed annexation from the city of Flagler Beach. Now, I know that is quite a way in the future, hopefully, at least a few sessions, but there's, there are some concerns that have been raised by the city and are clearly set forth in a multi-page, pages, memorandum, two of them, on Veranda Bay and, of course, the so-called Summertown, which is the west side of John Anderson Highway. There has not been anything resembling a traffic study. We know that John Anderson Highway is a particularly fragile highway. I think several years ago, Commissioner Hanson said, "We will not four-lane John Anderson Highway." It is one of the few semi-rural areas left in the county, and it's, of course, on the target of many of the developers. Would ask you to consider several things that are really unique. There are nearly 100 driveways hitting John Anderson Highway south or south of Highway 100. It's not like the developments that have a guardhouse out front and all the people come and go from that one way onto the highway. People on John Anderson come out on the highway all over the place. There's heavy vegetation along the road. There are mailboxes in front of virtually all of the houses, and there are gates on many, if not most, of the properties. I live there, and I can tell you, you pull out very cautiously, not just because of the traffic from the cars, but the bicycles, the ATVs, and all that's already coming down that road. If, if the development of the areas to the north, which of course would be Veranda Bay and the other west side of John Anderson, is going to bring a significant traffic increase. When this PUD was first approved in '06, the commissioners were very, very concerned about protecting John Anderson Highway and not allowing it to become a four-lane or, who knows, a six-lane highway, and keep it in the condition it is, not only for safety, but for the aesthetic value. The people that live along John Anderson, many of them have 200, 300-yard driveways, and they are part of the protection for the wildlife. It's not like a subdivision where you have a lot more, a lot more buildings than you do animals. So, we ask you to be thinking about how we're going to protect John Anderson in light of this proposed annexation. Thank you.
Thank you. I think we'll have some comments at the end of the meeting, so stick around. Okay, thank you. Any other public comment? Good morning.
Good morning. Good morning, Chair. Good morning, Commissioners. I'm just looking over the consent agenda. I had a question... Oh, excuse me. Robin Paletta, Halifax Plantation HOA Board. Consent item 7-0. My question is, does this item preclude considering the absent sales tax in 2026? I know that there's a current funding pattern for the dune restoration and beach restoration replenishment projects that has an intricate funding mechanism for it for the upcoming year, seeing that the county has an aim of saving about $900,000 a year to fund, to piggybank as funding for our match. So I have a question about that. I also wanted to say, I didn't have a chance at the last meeting to express my condolences on the loss of Georgia Salinas, and I see that you're considering the appointment of another individual to take his spot. It's going to be hard to fill his shoes, so my condolences to the administration and to the commission. Another thing, and I'd like to piggyback on Mr. Tanner's comments about the consideration of annexation of Veranda Bay and Summertown by the city of Flagler Beach, and I've looked over that 14-page memorandum. And there's a couple of issues there that have not been presented for public information. And number one is going to be the total utility cost to the residents of Flagler Beach. A development of this size, in my opinion, is going to have a severe impact on wastewater and water services. And originally, under the, under the original gardens, my understanding is that the developer was going to pay for a wastewater treatment plant. They have acreage adjacent to the current on for Flagler Beach. I don't see where that cost is going to come from, who's going to fund it. I know that Palm Coast and the city of Flagler Beach have had incredible utility hikes. So is it fair to the existing customers for them to bear the cost of this additional infrastructure? I think, and, and as I said, I haven't seen any data to support the impact on that infrastructure, let alone police, fire, and emergency services. So, in terms of the cost of annexation, that's my other question. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else for public comment? All right, seeing none, I'll close public comment, and I guess the one issue, Ms. Petita, did you want to speak to 7-0 on the question about the advance?
Certainly. Just to explain the process, it is really just a cash flow issue, so it will be reimbursed. So it's just a temporary stopgap, because we don't have usually those type of funds sitting in the operating. So we're moving it into the, out of a reserve into that fund to be able to cash flow. Once the reimbursement is made by the agency, state agency, that money will go back into the general fund reserve. So it's really just a matter of moving the money to pay the bills and then just moving it back once we're reimbursed.
Okay, thank you. I think that was it, right, for questions? Anybody else have any comments to address? Okay. With that, we'll move to consent. Did anybody have anything that they wanted to comment on, on consent? Hanson?
No. I would welcome our new deputy administrator, though.
That's, that's a very good comment.
Yeah.
Ms. Pennington, anything?
No.
Commissioner Carney? Commissioner Richardson?
I second that. We need to, so, our new staff.
Yes, I would, at this time, being on the, on the consent, Mr. Percy Sales, congratulations, hopefully, all right, on this appointment. The board, I know, is very excited from everybody I've talked to that they are looking forward to your addition to the administrative team. And I know our fire department is very sad to see you leave, but they know for the betterment of the community for Flagler County, it's, it's the right move, and, and they speak extremely highly of you. So, you've done a, a good job with fire services and look forward to working with you on, in the future. All right, with that, is there anything to pull? Commissioner Hanson?
No, sir.
Commissioner Pennington?
No.
Commissioner Carney? Commissioner Richardson?
No, sir.
Okay, I don't have anything, so is there a motion?
Mr. Chairman, I move we approve the consent agenda.
Second.
A motion by Commissioner Hanson, seconded by Commissioner Richardson.
And we're done.
All those in favor signify with aye.
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 Any opposed? Hearing done, motion carries unanimously. I meant to go back to the clerk for roll call. Let's just do that. I've got that added to the top of my to-do list, and I missed it, but let's make it the roll official. So clerk, if you could start that for me.
Commissioner Hanson?
Here.
Commissioner Pennington?
Here.
Commissioner Dance?
Here.
Commissioner Carney?
Here.
Commissioner Richardson?
Yes.
Thank you.
All right, I'll try to make that better at the beginning of the meeting, but thank you. All right, so consent's approved. We will go and, we don't have any action items or public hearings today, so we'll move to the end, and comments by our administrator, Ms. Petito.
Thank you. Just a couple of things. I wanted to provide an update on some of the issues that our human resources team are continuing to work on, that are going to be due back to the board. The first one being the salary survey. They are still meeting with companies to conduct that salary survey. You may recall, they were meeting with one company when it was brought up the last meeting. They found that company to be a little too expensive for the services that were being provided. They are scheduled to meet with about six other companies and should have something to report back to the board over the next few months. The second issue that they're working on was pertaining to our health insurance fund. There was a request to come back and look at the differences between the self-insurance and then the fully insured models, and having a presentation come back to the board sometime in January. So we are working with our broker. They have already requested some quotes, and they're gathering some of that information, so we look to bring that back to the board sometime in January. So they are still working on those two items. And then I had previously shared with you a letter that I received from Dale Martin, the city of Flagler Beach city manager, and it was in regards to the processing and consideration of the annexation development, Veranda Bay and Summertown. At that meeting that they had on October 23rd, the city commission extended an opportunity to have county staff come to their November 13th meeting, where they are considering the annexation. I believe that is their first reading for the annexation. They asked that we be present to discuss any formal discussions that we've had with the developer about acquiring environmentally sensitive lands as it pertains to their project on the floodplain and those areas. So internally, we have gathered some of that information, but I'm looking for direction from the board if that's something you would like us to attend and pursue.
All right, so we'll open that up for conversation if you've read the, need any more background information on that. Now's the time to chat.
Well, I think by all means, we need to go and get our position on the, on, you know, especially the west edge of the, of the development. I think that's too close to the creek, and if they're going to develop that, we need to put in a substantial buffer between the park and the creek and then, and whatever he's going to do up there. So, best of all worlds, we buy that piece of land, but I don't think that's in the, that's in the offing. Too expensive, and it's not for sale, so... But yes, we need to get, get our thoughts, we need to attend that meeting and, and get our thoughts out on the table.
Ms. Pennington?
Well, first, I want to ensure that, because we had a discussion as a previous board, that we were always paying attention to this annexation to make sure it follows state statutes in regard to annexation, enclaves, urbanization, because this board, and I'm going to assume, I think you guys, maybe we've talked about it a little bit, wants to follow that, make sure that we, that is a legal annexation, and if not, be notified so that we can determine what our options are on that, because I don't think we're fully on board with annexation with the numbers that they're projecting over there. So, that's going to be critical, that legal continues to update us and apprise us of that, make sure it follows state statute. I think we should be involved in it, and I don't, I'm not aware of discussions with the developer on purchase. There was a maybe initial discussion, correct, and that was it? I don't think we've ever heard back from them. I know we asked that they reach out, but I've never heard back. You know...
I know that behind the scenes, based on those early discussions, that staff was looking at North Florida Land Trust for potential funding, to be a partner with us on acquisition. We also are looking at the Florida Wildlife Corridor and Florida Forever as two other programs that the state offers as a possible funding partner. So we have been doing some research that we look to share with them. And then we also had contacted the St. John's River Water Management District as a potential partner in this acquisition, and then naturally, we have our own ESL, environmentally sensitive land program. So, behind the scenes, we've been talking to other state agencies to look at, what does it look like from a partnership standpoint? But as far as finalizing any sort of acquisition through the developer, no, we have not been successful with that yet.
Well, let me, let me jump in, because I, I made some calls. It's, it's been, I think, as we've advanced the Beulah Creek Headwaters Regional Park and with the Eco Discovery Center within that area, right, it's always been, we've expressed concern, but we haven't had a willing seller. And so I, I took the opportunity to reach out to Mr. Shmento and asked for a meeting with him and Mr. Belshi, which we had last week. So, in correspondence, the door's not closed. I mean, he's, he's, he's open to, to that as a negotiation. I don't think by any means we're there. My ask was 100% of the floodplain be retained, which is about 215 acres. And, and that kind of spurred some conversation, which is why, you know, we just want to have the public discussion here about getting some of the other agencies involved. So Mr. White, thank you, sir. I reached out to him, and he's made contact within the Water Management District itself. And Mr. Revelta took the lead at Ms. Heidi's direction to reach out to the... And Mr. Revelta took the lead at Ms. Heidi's direction to reach out to the land trust and do some background research, because the, the area around the headwaters is connected to already a preserve, the Blue Way, which is a project of the, of the land trust. And the water management district has conservation areas that abut the property. So there's connectivity and adjacency, which adds importance and relevance to preserving more of the headwaters area, especially the floodplain area. You know, flooding's been in the, in the news and, and the compound flooding has been a topic here for a long time. So within that basin, we've seen the southern, right, the southern emergency access, which is Walter Boardman, has been covered with water for days and days. Down on Old Dixie, closer to Timoca, has been deeper than it's ever been, but flooded for days and days. So the importance of protecting the floodplain is, is, you know, now more than ever, pretty significant, especially for that basin. So there's been movement and, and I think that that's the response. Heidi just wanted to make sure that everybody's on board and there's consensus to continue to spend time with the other outside agencies to pursue funding. One of the things that we do have, apparently the developer's engineer has a different, right, if you turn on the property appraisers map and you click the firm button, you can see the coloration of the current firm map and where the floodplain area is. But there, the project engineer has done the analysis and has a different delineation of where the edge of the floodplain is. So we're waiting to get that data back. But there's a process that has to be involved. It has to go to FEMA, it has to be approved, there's public hearings to change that line. But we definitely want to see what their data is and have experts look it over and review it. But, so as far as the willing seller, the, you know, face to face, they're, they think that there's, there's room somewhere in between, maybe 100% ask. You know, they do have rights, which were made clear that they can permit, you know, impacts into the wetlands. It's allowed and, but it's, it disturbs, it's not the same as providing compensating storage for those impacts, because it disrupts the hydrology, it disrupts the tree canopy, it disrupts the, the wildlife corridors. All those impacts have significance. So a little background from the past week, so. Commissioner Carney, anything to add? Are you okay with pursuing those paths?
I, I just think it, I just think we're at the 23rd hour. I mean, it's not like we haven't been aware of this. I, I don't know the, the politics behind it. I did meet with one of the commissioners over there and he firmly believes that there is no flood impact whatsoever on development of that land. So he and I are 180 degrees on that one. Flagler Beach moved, I think December of '23, they took the, the rights away from the citizens of Flagler Beach regarding annexation and they moved it from a referendum vote to a super majority on the board, mostly because of this project, I believe. And they're, they're confirmed, they're, they're, my opinion is, they are, they have decided, they pretty much, in some of their minds, thinks that this is just a John Anderson issue, when as Ms. Robbins stated, there have been no math figures, there's been no projected cost to, I live there, I'm going to be impacted by this. There's no data on the cost of, of this annexation anywhere in the city of Flagler Beach. So I don't think you have a willing buyer, a seller, I'm sorry, being in real estate, you can't move forward without a, a willing seller. Are we going to throw a number out there? We haven't even vetted that land in our environmentally sensitive land system. I think Mrs. Petito needs to explain to the city that we have a process and we can't even get to our process. So I don't, I don't know. I, I wish them luck. I'm not, I'm, I'm not convinced we have a seller. So if, it would be nice if they would talk to the city. I don't, how this got pushed on to this county, other than the fact we have funds and the city doesn't. I just don't think the city is, is educated and ready to preserve that area as much as we are. And we have different reasons than they do, but the, if we're going to preserve it, it's going to fall on the county. So I, I would take painstakingly, take as much staff time as possible, but I would feel better if I knew there was some hope. And they need a four to one vote. I don't, I don't know where they are on that, but they need a lot more work. I'd loved the, I talked to our attorney after the 14-page memorandum and we just have to take a position as to whether or not it's a legal annexation or not. And maybe if we don't think it is, we can tie up some time to be able to look at it for, to see if he's going to sell. But they're just moving way fast on the new proposal. But that's their right. So having said that, we can keep looking or keep asking, but I think a lot of this data may already be out there. We've just got to put it all together. As far as going to the meeting, it's funny, they don't want to meet with us at joint workshops to discuss the beach, but for the annexation and money, it's okay for us to go to them. So I have no problem. I'd like to see the presentation before it's given to the city of Flagler Beach, not for comment, just for information. And you can give them whatever they're asking for, I just don't think you're there yet.
Ms. Richardson?
I'm going to put it in Ms. Richardson tone, if I can. Robin, thank you for reminding me, as I still have the initial brochure for the gardens. And I was there when they started that project and it was a very precious land. My biggest concern is we're losing Florida every day. And that area is Florida. It's my Florida. It's, what I'm doing, sitting right here, is to preserve Florida, keep Florida, Florida, while we can. Destruction of that community and that area, yeah, there's a lot of folks like Mr. Tanner that live there that are very concerned. I know that personally, they have a lot of friends over there. But I don't know what we can do, but I have to tell you, my heart is breaking. We are losing precious pieces of Florida, one by one. And that's one of the things, the reasons I moved here from South Florida, was the beauty of nature, High Bridge Road, the entire Walter Boardman, watching the alligator in the corner. That's Florida. And that's one of our most beautiful parts of our county. It, it sold me. And I'm a salesman. So my opinion is, I just don't like having to see any of this happen. And I'm just going to leave it at that. I don't know all the facts. I don't, I have smarter people next to me, but my heart is in Florida. So I hope we can keep it as environmentally safe, animal corridor, all the things we talked about today. I'm really praying for that. That's, that's where my heart is. So that's all I can say. You guys are much more in tune with it than I am in that. I'm, I'm just worried about the animals, the people, the residents, the community, the water and the beauty of Florida. And I'll leave it at that.
Just want to make sure you're on board with continuing to work on.
Well, we have to, there's, there's no other choice. There's no other choice. But the best practices would meet my preference, so you heard what I'm, I'm for.
Thank you, ma'am, appreciate that. Ms. Petito, anything else?
No, so just to confirm, I'm going to follow up with a letter summarizing our efforts as it relates to the property. That letter will be shared with our board as well as sent over to the city as part of the public record. We will have somebody in attendance on the night of the meeting, November 13th, should their board have any questions of us after receiving the letter. And then tomorrow, I just wanted to let everybody know that I'll be presenting at the Future Flagler Forum. This is an event being put on through the Chamber of Commerce, hosted at the Palm Coast United Methodist Church. It should be well-attended, about 150 attendees, and it runs from 11:00 to 1:30 p.m. And that does it, thank you.
Thank you. Any questions for Ms. Petito? Okay. All right, Mr. Rodriguez?
Morning, sir. Morning. Briefly, one of the matters we're addressing, we're currently working on amending certain language to our short-term rental ordinance. And some of the language we're looking at is a covering, an additional language to attempt to regulate the advertising of short-term rental. Right now, one of the issues we have in order to try to, not necessarily curtail, but to kind of regulate short-term rentals is that a lot of these, the owners are not local and you have a lot of these properties that are not, that haven't been registered, yet they're being advertised as short-term rentals. Yet the way that the ordinance is written and the way that code enforcement operates under Chapter 162, because they're really tied to the property, you really can't go after those that are marketing or advertising the properties, because there's, you don't have a valid violation against those, those persons. So one of the avenues is to adjust the ordinance in order to provide that, either if you're going to advertise or market a short-term rental in the county, that, you know, one of the ways to try to do it is that, you know, the person that's advertising or marketing it, you must show proof that the property has been registered with the county in order to properly advertise it. That way then, now you have something tangible to go after the agencies that are marketing or advertising these short-term rentals in order to try to, to, to try to control them. We don't have that. So what we're looking for is a consensus from the commission to proceed forward, to amend the code, and then we would bring that forward for, for approval from, from you guys for going forward.
How did, how did you learn of this issue? What stimulated this change?
Well, it's, actually, it's something that has been, has come up. And actually, the Flagler-Volusia Code Enforcement Officers Organization actually had their meeting here. They had me, invited me over to speak to them. And that was one of the questions that was raised, which was, well, can we go after the folks that, that advertise? And unfortunately, the way that, in my experience is, I, I mean, I used to be the code enforcement, I've done code enforcement for years. And the problem then lies is, is the way that these ordinances are written. You really, you have to, you know, tie the, and not just because they're tied to property, usually 162, you're really going to go after property, but because the ordinances are usually written, you're, you're, you kind of have a transactional nature and you're going to after the owner, or that's the let, let's see. And you have someone who's, who's marketing, there is no privity between the tenant or the owner. This is just kind of a third party out there. So there's going to be a gap for you to have a proper enforcement action against just the person who is, a company who's out there marketing. So they could be out there going, well, no, we're just taking an ad and, and placing it. We have nothing to do with the actual rental of the property or registering of the property. We're just, we receive an ad, a request for an ad, and we publish the ad. That's all we do. So it becomes a really tenuous prosecution at that point. In order to risk losing such a prosecution or, you know, or losing it in an appeal, it's best to kind of tighten the ordinance, to tighten that, that actual violation to it, to, and adjusting the language in order to get a, a successful prosecution of a case against a, of those folks that are, that are marketing, to ensure that we have it, that we capture that group so that we can properly regulate it.
So I was just wondering if the tax collector came to you with a list of people or?
It actually came from the, it came from the enforcement, our enforcement officials.
Code enforcement, okay. All right, thank you.
Okay.
I would just ask, have we had that conversation with the tax collector? Because right now, they scour, right, if there's a, an owner that hasn't registered and is advertising, they have a company that scours all those listings that are out there. And if, and they cross-check. If they don't have a license, then they, they cite them. So I didn't know if you've, if you have had that discussion with them, so we're all on the same page.
I haven't worked on, on that end. Now, that would be a different tact to go. This would, would provide code enforcement with another avenue to go after these companies for, for, you know, basically advertising unregistered properties. And then you would be able to provide the fine sections of 162, which would give you more teeth against these companies to tighten them up so that, that these companies would now ensure that if we're going to take in advertisements for short-term rentals, that they are going to affirmatively check that these are registered properties.
All right. Again, my only suggestion is we, we have that discussion with, so that we, any changes that we make, everybody's on board with.
Yeah, that was the number one problem in Flagler Beach, is there's no teeth, because if you didn't have somebody that would do an affidavit saying that they actually rented that unit, there was no way to tie it to code enforcement.
We had the same issue in, when I did this in Volusia. It actually took a, we had a very, we had a very nosy neighbor who actually provided reams upon reams of affidavits, because they went out there and interviewed every single person over a month, taking down license plates, taking down addresses. And it actually was our first successful prosecution of a short-term rental that was under the, kind of an under-the-radar rental. Because even, we would go on and scour, our code enforcement officers would scour Verbo and Airbnb to, to pinpoint the properties, but we could never actually, when it came time in for, in front of the county's code enforcement board, we couldn't provide that link to tie the, the property owner to an actual rental, until we actually had the neighbors that were proving that we had folks in there that were underneath the, the timeframes that were provided under our Volusia County's regulations for what they called them transient rentals down there. So, but this is just, this would not be regulating the actual rental, so we wouldn't be skirting the state's preemption. This is going to be going after unregistered properties and trying to regulate the advertisement of unregistered properties and going after those folks that are advertising unregistered properties.
I just have to add, I, I remember when this started and we were a target here, if you guys remember, a long time ago, probably about, I'd say about, probably about 18 years ago, when they just started the short-term rentals and it was a disaster. It was a big problem, big company came in and was getting all the, disturbing every community that was on the higher end with three o'clock in the morning parties. So it's, it's changed, it's morphing, but it's hard to believe, it's over a decade, that, that same regulation has caused this much harm and damage to the residents. And that's one of those things, so I'm glad we're on top of it. Thank you for being there, Mike, I appreciate that.
No problem. So if I can get a consensus, you wish?
One other, one other comment, there's a disconnect between code enforcement and the tax collector. Their lists do not match. Something I've been looking at. So just, if you would look at that when you're doing this.
Okay, we'll do.
That'd be good, thank you.
Great, thank you.
Consensus?
Consensus?
Yes.
Sure.
Yes.
Okay, yes, so we'll bring, we will bring forth an ordinance for your review and, and approval. And then I, I guess I'll piggyback on the, the issue with Veranda Bay and Summertown. So we will, I will not be able to attend the meeting of the 13th. I actually will be on board on airplane at the time of the, of the, of the meeting. But I have delegated Sarah Spector will be appearing on behalf of the county attorney's office. She made the presentation at the last Flagler Beach. I have been working, we, Sarah and I have been working closely on this matter. She is up to, up to task and up to, she, she is. on this matter. She is up to, up to task, and up to, she is more than well-equipped to handle this, this case for, on behalf of the county. So, she will be in attendance at this meeting, on behalf, so, and we will work together with administration to prepare the, the responses, we, the legal responses for the, this, our county's position on the annexation, which are, as we've stated, we are still, we've not received a clear response yet from the city as to the, the statutory requirements for annexation, that they, that all owners have signed petitions requesting the annexation. There, we have gotten different responses from different folks, and the city has not actually even given us the actual application showing that each property owner within the scope of the area that's being annexed has signed a petition as the statute requires. And that's one that there is actual attorney general's opinions in case law, which provides that when you have a annexation, that you don't get an association to sign on your behalf. The one, there's an attorney general's opinion in which a property that was a condominium property, it was a condominium association that signed the annexation petition, and the opinion was, no, the statute clearly states every property owner, so when a condominium petitions to annex into a piece of property, the condominium association is not the applicant. It's every individual condominium owner has to sign. And if one owner doesn't sign, the annexation does not go forward. So, that would, that would apply here as well. So, if you have one property owner who refuses to sign a petition, or does not sign the petition, then that cannot go forward if that one property owner's lot ends up creating an enclave.
So, what is our drop-due date to have those signatures before we decide whether or not we want to contest the annexation?
Well, no. If the application is incomplete, and they proceed to go forward, then that's, that's, then it's, then it would then be a challenge to the ordinance. If they proceed forward and state, no, we believe it's, it's done, and they, they, you know, adopt the ordinance, then it would be up to this commission to challenge that adoption of that ordinance in circuit court, as, as a challenge to the, to the legality of that ordinance pursuant to state statute.
They would have up to the second reading, right?
It would be, they would, yes, they would have up to second reading to correct. So, if it's, once they adopt that second reading, if we believe that there is a legal deficiency to that ordinance, then we would have in 30 days after the adoption of that ordinance to challenge it in circuit court.
Okay. Game on.
Thank you, sir. Anything else?
That is it for our department.
Okay, thank you.
All right. At this time, it's our second community outreach. If there's anybody that wishes to address the commission, this is the second time. Tanner?
Yes, Mr. Chair, the wisher announced it.
Yeah, announce it in the mic, sir.
And, still, fortunately representing Preserve Flagler Beach. I'll just, just take a moment. I know from the contact I've had with the developer that they're interested in making a profit, and that's no surprise to any of us. We need to put together, as has been suggested, partners that will help the county, if the county wants the help, purchasing the land. I have spoken to, in fact, I spoke to Representative Greco two days ago, and he's put me in touch with the lead man in his office that's working with me on that. There are all sorts of state funds available for recreation, for wildlife, for the Wildlife Corridor, and for the special, those few special areas that are left in Florida, and there's, they are here. And this, this unique brackish water, fresh salt marsh area, and surrounding hardwoods, is really unique. It houses panther. We, we have pictures of panther here in the county. It houses bear. It houses otter, has porpoise, et cetera. And, and there just isn't much of that. This may be a wonderful development, it's just in the wrong place. And this developer has developed all over the county, and probably all over the state from what little I read about him, and he, he knows how to develop land. It doesn't have to be right in the middle of a piece of absolutely unique Florida that Flagler has and can protect, and him not lose a penny. In fact, he can make money. I know they, they worked a deal in, in Palm Coast with regard to the golf course and things that they're working on, and they got millions of dollars in federal tax credits because it was for a, a criteria that the federal government would award tax credits. And so, that, plus the, I think, the numerous agencies that have indicated an interest, and thank goodness, our county is, is interested, is willing to put up some money. I believe the land can be purchased, the developer can be whole, and he can actually hold his head high in having helped protect a piece of what most of us who've been in Florida for more than a few years treasure. So, we hope that you'll just stay the course, because I'm pushing, and our group is pushing, and we're working as hard as we can to, to develop the funding, and no one's trying to take anything away from Mr. Belshi, or his, or his boss, or the organizations that they represent. We would just like to protect this piece of land and make him whole, and not just whole, but he can make a fair profit. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
And thank you for your time, again.
Mr. Tanner, may I ask?
Absolutely, go ahead.
Thank you. Last I heard, there was some communication with the Seminole Indian Remnants, or the Seminole Indian Tribe?
Yes.
Did you research any more on that, or?
No, I, I did not. We had, several years back, had sought that type of interest, and there did not seem to be at that time. We've heard since that time, they're showing an interest, I guess probably because more and more of this land is being hit this way.
Right.
But just, just to help you remember, and I know all of you live here, drive down John Anderson and look to your east, and that's what the developer does. Look to your west, and that's what it should look like. Thank you.
Thanks.
Thank you. And a comment in regards to yours, I, I believe there is, on the west side of the preserve, our Bureau Creek Preserve area, between that and Old Kings Road, within the city limits of Palm Coast, there is a Relic Dune, and, and I do believe some other historic sites within that area where the Relic Dune is.
I think it comes all the way over to John Anderson.
All right, next public comment. Thank you, Mr. Tanner.
David Eckert, Calle del Sur. As all of you are aware, Flagler, City Flagler Beach took some action to proffer a MSTU relative to the beach funding. We also have in process the formulation of the MSBU in the Northern that will be reported on sometime, I think, in November, December. So, those two things are on the table at the present time. I don't know whether you want to plan a workshop, or, I don't think it's to your advantage to comment on any of that today, but in a few weeks or during the month of December, the calendar starts to come in with notifications from the Flagler Beach to the state relative to the MSTU. So, I'm hoping that you're all thinking about the various movements of this. I think I've told most of you that I, I think it's a very good idea for the city of Palm Coast to actually indicate their position on the half-cent sales tax, so that they would move first. So, if there was a possibility that the city of Palm Coast could state their position sometime in the next few weeks or the next month, that would be helpful to the county for their position on the half-cent sales tax. Then you would have the MSBU, the MSTU from Flagler Beach, all tabled relative to maybe what their positions are. It would help the formulation of what the county's position is on formulating a way to fund, dedicated funding mechanism for the shoreline, for the whole 18 miles, in the, during the budget process of 2026, '27. So, think, be thinking about that from a calendar standpoint.
Thank you, sir. Any other speakers? Public comment? All right, we'll close public comment, bring it back. Mr. Eckert, I think the point is, you know, November and December, definitely, Ms. Petito can chime in. We do have to have some, it'll be our budget time, so we have to start looking at, at funding for all of our needs, including the beach. So, I think a, we do have to have that special beach funding discussion, our long-term beach funding discussion. So, I don't know when you want to plan for that, if you want to get back to us, if it's going to be end of November, beginning December, or, or later. But I know it's, it's coming up. Time, it's time.
Typically, we do our pre-budget kickoff sometime November, December, where we look back at our strategic plan, and we make sure that we've updated that ahead of our budget cycle. And then we do the budget rollout or the kickoff. Usually, it's in December or January, so it probably would be around that same timeline.
Okay. So, as it fits in to the schedule, just let us know in, in advance, so we can, we can do our own work ahead of that. But I know it'll be a complex, it could be multiple, even multiple workshops or special meetings if we need to.
Certainly.
Okay.
Didn't a couple of the municipalities want to do a referendum? Didn't they want to put it on the November ballot, for next November? No?
We haven't received anything in writing as far as a letter. I've heard conversations, or might have read articles and stuff like that, but I don't know that they formally sent us a letter.
Well, of course not. They're, they're not going to send us a letter. It, it was thrown out there, how many months ago? July, August? I don't remember. But I know Flagler Beach wanted a referendum. They were open to doing a referendum vote on a half-cent sales tax. So, while you're getting the feedback from Palm Coast about the half-cent sales tax, ask them about a referendum. Right? No?
Well, the referendums are, comes from us. I mean, we can ask for support, but it falls on us.
Well, we're already discussing the half cent with them, so can't we get the same question, can't we get that question answered at the same time? What's the question we're asking them? Mr. Eckert was suggesting we, that we get with Palm Coast and ask about the half cent, their position on the half-cent sales tax.
I haven't sent any correspondence or talked to the city, because it's not the direction from the board. So, I haven't had conversations with the city about resurrecting a half-cent sales tax. I think the comment, we'd have to ask Mr. Eckert, the resident, what his suggestion was. It's not something that I've been pursuing.
So, as we, as we move towards what some people consider a dedicated funding source, if we base it on the previous countywide funding plan, I think it's pretty clear how this board looks at it by consensus. And we would only, it would only be successful if it went by referendum. We have to know, several of us, I anyway, need to know what the, what the, what the other municipalities want. What do they want? They, if, if they say to us, you guys have to impose the half-cent sales tax, and they, and they come forward and say that, then that's a different animal. And we never got that far. We never got that far.
And you have to, to have it interlocal with the percentage in place.
Right. So, we're in the same position we were, you know, a year ago, a year and a half ago. So, I mean, I, I know we have to talk about it again in January, whenever it is, but I, I just don't know how any of the outside, I don't know how any of it has changed. So, unless I'm presented with a major change in the momentum for the half cent, or how the citizens of Flagler County feel about the half cent, we're just going to beat this thing to death again. And that's okay. I'm here. I'm paid to be here. So, you, you got to make sure that you got a whole different sales pitch on that one.
Well, I think it is part of the conversation that we have, trying to come up with the plan. And it's, in and of itself, is a huge task. So, I think you have to have a well-thought plan presented, if that's going to be the option. If we come back and talk about that in December or January, we have time limits, we have constraints with the supervisor's office, that has to be laid out, and, and probably somebody that can speak to the effort that's needed to see this to fruition in November, because it's, it is a, it is a joint community effort if it's going to be successful.
So, if I could, Chair, just to clarify or make sure that I have proper direction, is it the board's desire for me to contact the cities and ask them if they support the half-cent sales tax?
By referendum.
By referendum. So, you would like me to reach out, the board would like me to reach out and ask ahead of our discussions in November and December?
I don't agree with that. I don't think-
No, I think we have to have the discussion first. I mean, we've tried both ways, but I think we're at the point where they, you know, asking them before we've committed to something is, is probably not the best plan of attack.
Okay.
We know we have support from the city of Palm Coast for the half-cent sales tax. We know we have support from Flagler Beach for the half-cent sales tax. I'm not sure about Bunnell. But, so, I, we already know that. I think going out and asking them again is not, not-
Do we know that for sure?
No, nothing's been-
Nothing, just, just in them talking to the various commissioners, or just, or councilmen, and said, yeah, we support it.
That's rumor and-
I talked to the same one, and I don't feel the same way.
I don't know what they're doing.
The mayor himself is on record saying, we support the half-cent sales tax, so.
Let's have a philosophical discussion about that. Two people from the boards came to a joint meeting to discuss it. Not a-
Right.
Majority needed to support an ILA giving up, I don't know, what was it, 80% of their portion of the tax. Now, you're going into an election season, up against putting something on a referendum with boards changing. I, I don't, I think, and we still don't have that, you know, we don't have ILAs saying, I'm going to give over 80% of our last half penny for infrastructure, and within our cities for the beach. So, I, I don't know that it's there. I don't, I don't think at the end of the day it'll end up being there, but I guess that's what she's saying, is can we have that in writing from them, so that if the board comes to that discussion, and the meetings and the workshops that were going that direction, we will be immediately able to give direction for them to obtain ILAs for that percentage? Because you'll need that before you even, because the plan works on an ILA based on a percentage from its city, and you're going to need the boards that are there today to commit to that and enter into it prior to election, and changes in boards.
I think you would need those commitments before the language is drafted, and that, that's why I'm saying there's a series of deadlines that need to be-
And I, I still have questions about the MSBU, because I'm getting a lot of feedback from people going, you know, why do, why is it a flat MSBU on the unincorporated? How is it that I have to pay it in the unincorporated MSBU, but the incorporated, the cities don't have to pay the MSBU? So, here I am paying a benefit unit, and my money's being shipped up to Flagler Beach for their project, and they're not paying an MSBU. And where's the equality? Why am I in Reach Four, and my project is cheaper than Reach Three, but I'm paying an equal amount of an MSBU? I think all that has to be vetted. And then, we still need the MSBU study, and then we still need the Reach Three study on critical erosion to no true funding.
Do we have a timeline on those, on the study?
We do. You may recall, Taylor Engineering was scheduled to come present to you. The gentleman, Mr. Marino, had thought it would be more advantageous to present to you after he finalized his work in Volusia, so that he could show you kind of like that finished product, looking at Volusia County, which is why we had the delay. When we talked internally with Taylor- with Taylor Engineering, we looked at identifying each individual reach by jurisdiction. That's why the amounts probably will be different, but it will not be a flat fee. We had that number, and there was a flat fee just to demonstrate the amount of money that would be needed to be collected within those areas. But it is based on the benefit. If it is the BU, it's based on the benefit that each property owner receives, which is the piece that Taylor Engineering was working on, the apportionment side. But there's a lot that goes into it because when they're looking at the apportionment, they need to see what other funding is going to be making up that project so that they're not apportioning the entire cost to the people that live within that area. And they're all different because if you have critically eroded and you have public access, then you have state partnership so they provide more funding to the project versus areas that lack public access. So that's why the different reaches are a different cost.
So my, this is just my 30,000-feet thought on this, which is, we know that a lot of these mechanisms of funding are not codified, right? And we're trying to build out a dedicated funding source to appease the governments on requirements for funding for beach erosion so that we can have matches and be accepted. So I really think, like, it's such a unique project to do all 18 miles, and everyone has different constraints and costs and needs, and we have two municipalities thrown in there with it, that we know that this board is committed to funding each year the construction phases because we're trying to get to the maintenance phase funding. We're committed and we're funding, I'm sure we're going to have that talk this year and commit again to funding the next construction piece. I think we should be very careful and fully, and wait for the MSBU study, wait for the critical erosion study, and we should be then say, "Okay, how much money do we realistically believe this project needs?" And then start backing into the MSBU and sales tax, and then start ensuring that the MSBU is legal for each reach and group of people, and that it's fair and consistent, and that we can show that if we're not having an MSBU up in Flagler Beach, that funds that are collected out of this group that are being charged in MSBU are not shipping their funds up to Flagler Beach. We don't need a legal challenge to this. And we, there seems to be a real big rush to this, but we got to be very careful in how we do that. And we need these studies, and, you know, the half-cent to rush out, and I just, however we do it, but I'm telling you, we ought to be very careful with the MSBU, wait for the studies, and be methodical in how we apply that, and wait to see what they say. And so I almost, why I say that is because now, do you want to, is it important to run out to the cities and get support now, or do we wait till we have the entire, all the studies and then discuss the MSBU?
You're talking about the cart before the horse.
I don't know anymore because, but that's going to be really important. I'm worried about the MSBU. I seem to get more and more calls on that lately.
I've had some emails as well.
Everyone thought it was $160. They're like stuck in their head forever.
Or zero.
And now it seems to be like, real panic is ensuing. And so I want to make sure that legal is taking a good look at the MSBU and making sure that we remember that they all are bucketed differently than incorporated versus the cities.
And there's a reminder that the tax bill and the trim notice is all coming out now. So people are seeing that and panicking there, too. Just because it's that time of year, you know.
I just don't know how you're supposed to make all that decision at once.
That was a question about the study.
Putting it all together.
Yeah, I think that's really important. I have to wait to see.
If the study lines up with budget, are we going to get the study in time to have this holistic discussion with budget?
The apportionment is the last piece that you're waiting on, which is the determination of the amount for the MSBU. It should be done. It should line up to our budget cycle, yes.
Okay.
So I'm in favor of that conversation with all of the information in hand.
Yep. I can't do it without that report.
Okay. We've had Mr. Rodriguez, we have Ms. Petito. Public comments been asked and closed. Commissioner Hanson, I'll go with...
No, I have nothing.
Commissioner comments?
No.
Commissioner Pankin.
First, welcome Percy to the administration. Good to see you, sir. Can't think of a wonderful surprise, but very happy to have you. And my sincerest condolences to Commissioner Carney. I know what it's like to lose someone very close, and it's a lot of rushing around in the beginning, but you take time to get, because when it's all said and done, it really hits you, and it's hard. And so we're here for you, and you know that. Thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Carney?
No comments.
Commissioner Richardson?
Well, I just want you to know, we just had a big celebration at Hay Mac Dunes last, I guess it was about a week and a half ago, 10 days ago. The garden club had a fabulous, Greg was there as well, a fabulous event with the whole region of garden clubs. And we celebrated 50 years of Palm Coast Garden Club. So my hat's off to Denise Garcia. She ran the whole thing. It was amazing. I bought a peace plant, and I had a funeral the next day. So I bought one from them just to bring to a special friend. I've lost five friends this year, this month, this month. So let's all try to be kind to each other. I'm just going to say that because we've got a lot of angels flying around right now. So that's all. I just wanted to share about the garden club and their success. That shows even things start small. I wish the ag guy was still here because I'm very excited watching us lose our orange crops as a child growing up, and to see if they can come back is really going to be something special. So let's hope for that as well. And thank you all for being here today. I appreciate it. Staff, you were quiet today, but thank you for your support and your smiles. It means a lot. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Appreciate that. Again, my condolences and prayers with you, Commissioner Carney and your family. We are here to support you, whatever, take whatever time you need. Don't feel any other pressures besides taking care of your family. So again, our thoughts are with you. In regards to Veranda Bay and discussions, I'm continually the optimistic, last-half-full person. So I'm, after having that meeting, I'm hopeful that we can come to a solution that's of benefit to that immediate area. For having spent my early formative years 50 years ago, Beale Creek, the Beale Ruins was my playground as a kid. And so that whole area has a special meaning for me. And I made that pretty clear that it's important to preserve the quality and the character of that important waterway. And so I'm glad we're all working toward that goal anyway. And again, Mr. White, thank you for your quick and immediate responses and positivity in your emails as well. So we look forward to, we've had a great relationship with the Water Management District and the Land Trust since we've started that partnership with them. So hopefully, we can see some progress on that. Great to see Dispatch at the back table as part of the crew back there. So welcome again. Good to see you. And Adam, thank you for your comments, getting those out for the, to the City of Bonnell on the industrial zoning project. Appreciate that work. And really, again, I guess final comments is a welcome to Percy. And again, looking forward to working with you, and it's great to have you. In addition, it's a tough spot to fill. I understand, you know, how you come in with the county's heartbreak, but we have a new, a new shining star in the making. So thank you, sir. We look forward to that relationship with you. All right, anything else for the good of the...
I'm sorry. I said no comment, but I, I'm all right. I'll, I'd like to say thank you to Dispatch, but there is a flaw in the system, and I would like to take it on as a personal challenge. Just because you think you're a DNR, you aren't. State has different forms than your attorney has and your doctor. So there's no coordination of patient care. Got nothing to do with our system. They were fabulous. They embraced me. They worked with me. They were timely. I couldn't have asked for anything better. However, when all this is over and done, I would like to work on helping other Flagler County residents have a chance to have your legal wishes adhered to. EMS is a totally different animal than patient health or health, your welfare, than what you say to your doctor and what you say to your children. So they're not, it's not a continuous communication. So I would like to take that on as a personal challenge to help people in Flagler County be educated on what does actually happen when the time comes to need the paperwork that you need to get through the process because it's very challenging. But mom is happy. This is, she wanted to die in her sleep, and that's exactly what happened. But getting to that point was a little bit challenging. Thank you to all of you. Flagler Beach Fire was there. Our county EMS was there, and they followed me all the way to the hospital. So thank you very much to everybody in your department, chief, and 911. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Is there a motion?
Move we adjourn.
All right, we're adjourned. Thank you very much. Thank you, everybody, for being here.